Okay, so we're going to begin our work session for the evening of September the 18th, 2018, we being the Iowa City City Council. The first topic on our work session agenda is to consider elevating hourly staff wages to $15 an hour or more within two years. And I hope everybody in the room understands that this is a work session, is where we try to figure out how we think we need to proceed. We're not taking literally formal action, but we're trying to figure out what we want, how we want to proceed. And I also would like to say, before we get into discussing the topic in detail, I want everybody in the room, including people watching on TV, television, to know that right now, the lowest starting wage the city pays its roughly 200 permanent employees is $17.52?
Six hundred employees, not 200.
Oh, what, did I say 200?
Yeah, 600.
Oh, I'm sorry. My gosh, out of this, I meant 600 employees. And it's $17.52, right, Jeff?
Correct.
Yeah, so what we will be talking about tonight is whether to increase the minimum wage for temporary hourly employees to $15 an hour within a two-year period, or some variant thereof. We employ, at least according to our original account, something like 370 such workers. Roughly two-thirds of them work in the Parks and Recreation Department, and another one-sixth in the public library. And almost all of those temporary hourly employees earn between $10, $10, and $15 an hour. Do you want to elaborate in any way? You don't have to, but...
Yeah, just clarify. Our temporary employees fluctuate quite a bit on the season. So at the time that you received your information earlier this year was in January, those numbers were lower than they are now because it's summer, there's a lot more particularly Parks and Rec positions that we have during the summer months. And then as we go into fall and winter, that number will come back down again. So it's really hard to tell you how many temporary employees that we have because that's a number that's constantly changing throughout the seasons.
Okay. All right, so I would invite council members to offer their suggestions or whatever, Jeff.
May I just call attention? Mayor Throg Morton and Councilmember Sully had requested some additional information that we pulled together pretty quick. I just want to call your attention, there's a memo at your desk. What this gets at, there was, with the two largest areas where we have temporary employees is the library and the Recreation Division of our Parks Department. And we had previously supplied you with some total numbers of employees and then the wage scale. What we tried to do in this memo is give you a better sense of where the majority of those employees fall within those wage scales. So if you would like, Simon Andrew, who prepared this memo, could walk you through that, or if you've had time to read and digest that, we can simply answer questions if they come up.
Well, I thought I saw some broad numbers here. So it looked to me like there are 11, out of 52 hourly library employees, 11 earn more than $15 an hour. The others earn 14 or less per hour. And then with regard to Parks and Rec employees, when this particular memo was prepared, there were 400 part-time employees, is that correct?
401.
401 temporary employees. And 73% of them have wages of $12 an hour or less. 24% have wages between $1,250 and $1,450. And 3% have wages of $15 or higher.
It's mostly accurate. Those 401 employees actually fill about 1,300 different jobs. So for example, you might have a employee at the pool that serves as a manager one night, a swim instructor the next day, and then just a regular lifeguard. Those are all different, they're going to find themselves in multiple positions throughout the year. So those percentages that you gave reflect the various positions and not the actual employees. You could think of it probably in the same, but just to clarify that.
Okay. Good deal. All right, council members, what are your thoughts here?
Well, I guess I'll start the ball rolling here. When we last discussed this, which was what, a couple of sessions ago, work sessions ago, I referenced the, I'd done a little bit of research on this online and found that Madison, Wisconsin, had a living wage ordinance where the wage for their temporary employees was set at $13.27 an hour. And that seemed to correlate fairly well with some of the work that the Iowa Policy Project has done. If you look at their estimates for a living wage for a single adult household, it's right around that same figure. So this is a complicated issue, both in the sense of, you know, the question of what the living wage should be, and then also, as, you know, Jeff had lined out, outlined back in August, the impacts of this on the entire wage structure for the city. So I felt, what can we, what could I say at this point? And it boiled down to, in my mind, the idea of striving to raise the lower thresholds of the wages, in other words, the entry-level wages, to $13.27, while at the same time looking at essentially compressing the wage scales within our temporary classes so that the impacts of this would not, would have minimal impact on the permanent employees. So there would be a significant pay increase at the, you know, in one's first year, at least for those classifications or positions which are set at $10 to $11 an hour. But as you move up, the longer you stay with the city, the, you know, the wage increases wouldn't be as dramatic as they are now. So in other words, you know, some of the step increases now might be between $0.50 and $0.75. That would come down maybe to $0.25. So the goal in my mind was to increase at the bottom, kind of consolidate and compress within the temporaries, and maintain that kind of gradient that we have now from temporary to full-time employment. In terms of the timeline, I was thinking that we could initiate the $13.25 in July of next year. We could also ask staff, because a lot of this, you know, what are the financial impacts of this? That's, you know, the big question. It could be implemented either July of 2019 or July of 2020 with a step to $1,150 as a minimum wage in July of 2018. So just so that we'd understand the financial implications, have at least a couple of scenarios.
What was the step that you said might be possible?
Roughly in between $10, $10 and $13.25. So it would be around $1,125, something like that. No way, it would be $1,150. So clearly, you know, that step increase, you know, the financial impacts would be significantly less if we did it in two years than in one year because many of the positions are already set at $1,150 at an entry level. And then the last thing I would say is the question of there's a one-year in high school intern position, whether what we do applies to that. And as I recall, with Madison, it does not apply. So that's a question. If it's not $13.25, I felt that positions should still see a raise. So right now, it's at, I think, $10.27. Could be raised to $1,125 in July of 2019. So everyone, pretty much everyone will get a raise. Even in the, the longer you stay with the city, it won't be quite as dramatic, but even those step increases will see an increase.
But you mean like when it should be 13? You mean like July of 2019 is $1,125? That's what you're saying?
I was saying the, to understand, because we don't know what the financial implications of this change will be, that I was suggesting we ask staff to look at it both in terms of $13.25 in July of 2019, and $13.25 in July of 2020 with an interim step in July of 2019 of $1,150.
I just want to add too, I really agree with you, John. But I want to add, you just mentioned Iowa Policy Project. For the, you know, the benefit of the audience or the people who are watching us, they don't have the paper that we have in front of us. I just want to say that, you know, as Jeff said, you know, that the part-time employees or the hourly employees increasing every, maybe during summers more than another time. But if we just say estimating 370 Iowa City part-time employees, which is hourly employees, are paid poverty wage of less than $15 an hour. The Iowa Policy Project estimate that in 2018, a single person in Johnson County would have to earn at least $14.22 an hour to live just their basic need budget. And a single parent with one child would need a minimum of $25 to cover the family's most basic needs. Poverty wages really cause a lot of, you know, bad stuff like stress and health consequences and food insecurity, and really, it is just something bad. We don't want to see it. And I think the city should set the standard high. I really will love if you can do the $13.25 by July of 2019, and even we can break it, like I can add another addition things. And instead of, when we say $13.25 by July, that increase means like $3, almost. But if we can do it like July, $1.50, and January of 2020, another $1.50, so we don't have like that $3 like once time. That's, you know...
So you're suggesting that we start with, what was it, $13.25 in July of 2019, then six months later, bump it up again?
No, do it like one, let me, $10.25, $1.50, like $11.75, $11.75 on July of 2019.
Well, that's...
Like in the beginning of the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
And in January...
Oh, okay.
January, make it 13. That's what I think.
If I could maybe jump in here and offer my own views, I think it's very important that we identify what the target is first, what the timeframe to get there is, and what the budgetary impact will be. So I think the target for me is $15 an hour. I think we need to make clear that that's what we stand for, and that's what our goal is. Especially, it is a phrase going around the United States, but I think the history of the labor movement are slogans based upon real working needs. The 40-hour work week, the eight-hour work day. And I think now the new standard is the $15 an hour. And I think it's very important that the public sector set the standard, because if we can't do it, how can we possibly expect the private sector to follow along? We do have the financial capacity to do it. It is something that's feasible. That said, it is a budget, a big budget impact. I would like to see, I don't want to get into the minutia of precise timeframes, but I would like to see it over the course of three years. I do believe that if we do it over three years and have a goal of $15 an hour at the end of three years, we are going to have some significant property tax revenue that is going to come in. It will allow our staff opportunity and the collective bargaining to be able to adjust to that, so we don't, we avoid some of the wage compression. But that's what I would like to see, and with the first step being July 1st, 2019, prospectively after that point. So, and then from there, I think we would just have to have that budget discussion. But that's what I would like to see. I think that gives us time to adapt. It establishes the target, and it also establishes clear guidelines in terms of which direction we'd like to go.
Councilmember Thomas, Sully, and Cole have all made some very good points. I have given this a lot of thought and consideration, and I ask you to be patient with me while I read a statement that I've prepared that includes my comments and concerns. And first of all, with all due respect to my brothers and sisters in organized labor, I see you all out there, and to Councilwoman Sully, this proposal came as a surprise to me. No one had ever brought this to my attention. There was a concern that city employees were receiving poverty wages, to me as a council member, or to the council as a whole. And just last year, we as a council made a proclamation supporting the Board of Supervisors' efforts to increase the minimum wage locally. And again, no one raised the issue of city employee salaries. I have many questions yet regarding this. Most importantly, who is this intended for? And thank you all, Simon, Jeff, whoever had made the list of some of those that would be included. But, so is this referring to part-time employees? And by that, I'm familiar with a definition of part-time as those who work 20 hours or less. So I'm just wondering, what is the definition of part-time for us? Or, you know, is it 20 hours or less or more? And is this of their own choosing to work part-time? Does this include seasonal employees? I think I've heard the answer to that, that it does include some of those. And are the hourly positions or budgeted positions? Because I've recently heard about some part-time staff members whose hours have been cut back, and that's concerning to me. I don't like hearing that, that someone who's expecting so many hours per week is cut back significantly in the number of hours. So I don't like to hear that that's happening. And I think the question was brought up, whether this would include student interns, because we do have quite a few interns that work for us in various capacities. Do any of these positions require special skills? I haven't heard an answer to that. Are any of these positions off-shifts or even weekend shifts? And if so, does the city pay shift diff or weekend diff? I don't know the answer to that. And if we don't, we should consider doing that or even raising that. That's a possibility. And this has kind of been raised already. Do we know for certain the total effect this would have on all of the other salaries? Over the course of the next two to three years, could we follow? I originally was thinking of the Board of Supervisors' lead with the same percent rate of increments, such as this year, it was increased 17 cents per hour, and follow that same continual progression. But I do like Councilmember Thomas's suggestion about the progressions on that. Another thing that I would like us to consider is offering incentives, such as a yearly bonus for continuing to work for the city, or perhaps even considering educational assistance for college classes. A lot of cities, I looked into that, a lot of cities nearby and surrounding do offer that tuition assistance, particularly for their part-time folks, so that they can continue their education and go further in their careers. Or even vocational training, we've heard a lot about that from members of the audience and the council, that there is a need for that, for the vocational training. I think that that might be something, because there are cities that offer that also. We've heard that possibly due to the need to achieve the goals in our strategic plan, the city staff are feeling stressed. And what I would like to see is that we put our efforts towards, I'm sorry, this is long, I told you it's going to be long, towards looking at each of the departments to assess their possible need for additional full-time staff, and put financial resources towards that, thus giving additional full-time job opportunities for more people. And one place where there is likely to be a major need for more positions is the Transit Department. We heard about that earlier, that we're going to be looking at that very soon. So I think it would be imperative that we have sufficient funds in our salary budget to be able to add transit drivers, and that would be quite a cost. And Councilwoman Sully, you told me about one employee that you know of who struggles to make ends meet, and that does concern me. And of course, you have good intentions and are well-meaning with this proposal, but I was wondering if we also considered whether it might put these certain individuals in a higher tax bracket, hence paying more in income taxes, and possibly change their eligibility for free and reduce lunches, or even reduce a rent rate, meaning in the long run, perhaps less money in their pockets. I'd like to know some information about that, as far as how that might affect them. I believe that we do need to take a closer look at this issue, who it involves, how it would affect not only them, but the salary scale of all employees, and whether we might want to consider adding some incentives to the salary package for part-time employees. We need to look at the whole picture here, and I would suggest we take more time to look into all of these issues and concerns before we jump right into proposing $15 an hour for over 300 employees. That's all.
I'll just add my thoughts, and I've commented on this previously. One of the things that I kind of feel that kind of gets missed in a lot of this discussion is the fact that I think the city pays our full-time permanent workers very well. And I think we have great benefits, I think, between our health insurance and IPRs, et cetera. And so I think we have to look very carefully at what group of employees this is focusing on. And when, to me, when you look at literally the history of our economy, there have always been temporary, part-time, seasonal, oftentimes relatively low-skill, entry-type jobs into the labor market. And those are not jobs that we look at people filling on a long-term basis who are trying to support themselves or a family. Now, not to say that there aren't some people in those jobs, but typically, they are transient people. They are people who are working only seasonally and part-time, oftentimes by choice. Maybe they are students, you know, maybe they're in and out of the community or whatever. But again, they tend to be, in general, I would say, oftentimes relatively low-skill jobs that are an opportunity for people to start developing some skills within the job market, even things of, you know, coming to work on time, and how to be responsible, and those sorts of things. And building up to that point where they develop those skills for more significant jobs with higher skills, more responsibility, et cetera. So when we talk about living wage jobs, I absolutely entirely support the fact that we are doing that, and more than that, with our full-time employees. But when we are looking at these part-time, seasonal, temporary positions, I don't agree in terms of the $15 an hour. I think when we look at the $900,000 to $1 million dollar impact on the budget, and the fact that, again, our economy has always had these entry-level type jobs, I think we need to look at this as much more modest kinds of increases within this area.
Mayor, can I make one clarification based on some comments? I just, I just want to clarify that we do have permanent part-time staff...
Yes.
...that fall within either one of our collective bargaining units or our administrative and confidential units. So we do have part-time employees that work year-round for us, that make $17.52 or more. What we're talking about are the hourly, or sometimes referred to as seasonal employees. They would generally work less than 30 hours a week, but we do have some that work 40 hours a week. However, there's limitations on how long they can be employed 40 hours per week. So just want to clarify that. It's not a full-time, part-time issue. It is, there are part-time members of our staff that are permanent.
Okay, so if I could, I haven't had a chance to speak yet. I've been trying to listen for points of agreement or potential agreement, and while also thinking about some things I wanted to say. So let me express my own preliminary views first, and then let's see if we can come to some agreement about how we want to proceed.
Sure.
All right, so I, I'm completely committed to social justice for all sorts of reasons. I don't want to elaborate on that, but I'm completely committed to it. But I am very leery of increasing the minimum wage for all hourly employees to $15 a year within one or two years without having better information about possible adverse consequences and other contextual factors that matter. So, for example, all else being equal, if we increase spending by $900,000 to $1 million to pay for the proposed increase, we would have, I think this is correct, we would have to increase the city's tax levy by about 28 cents, or cut something or replace something. Right? I think that 28 cents makes sense.
If you were to put it all on the property tax, we wouldn't look to do that, but yes, that's equivalent.
Also, I think it would be fiscally irresponsible of us as the council of this city to increase spending by that amount, the $900,000 to $1 million, without first knowing what the state legislature is going to do in the spring session with regard to backfill payments. I don't know if you all know about that, but that's, last I knew, was something like, would be a loss of about $1.5 million if that money's taken away from us. Jeff, please tell me if I'm making mistakes about that. So if we spend another $1 million and have a million and a half taken away, we are creating a problem. So we don't want to do that, and I don't think you would want us to do that either. We have to figure out something else to get where we, I believe, all want to go. Moreover, if we want to increase the tax levy by the 28 cents that I just mentioned, we should be conscious of the fact that there are other alternative actions that we could take that might have a bigger effect on social justice. For example, improving night and Sunday bus transit service. That's going to cost money. And, okay, so what are we going to do, spend it on raising the minimum wage, or are we going to spend it on improving bus transit, et cetera? Another example would be continuing to contribute to the Affordable Housing Fund. This year, we contributed $1 million to that Affordable Housing Fund. If we're going to contribute another $1 million next year, which is a real stretch, how are we going to do that while also increasing spending on, increase by, increasing the minimum wage by $900,000 to $1 million? Also, and I think Pauline, you mentioned this, we might want to add additional staff to do work that we value. And, you know, that kind of stuff, those topics come up during the budget discussion, which begins officially kind of like in mid-December and goes until the middle of March, when by law, by state law, we have to adopt our budget. So we have to, you know, judge competing values and so on, and decide what we want to spend on versus not. Lastly, if we want to increase wages for hourly employees to $15 without increasing taxes, we should first ask ourselves what existing services and programs we would be willing to cut. So, you know, all else being equal. So I believe these are factors that we, as a city council, must consider before we immediately decide to increase the minimum wage for our hourly employees. That said, I was listening pretty carefully, and what I heard several council members say was that they would be very interested in starting with something lower than $15 an hour, effective...
July.
July 1st, 2019.
Yes.
Having another phase later and maybe going toward $15 an hour. Okay, so then the questions become, what would be a good starting point? What would be a good stepwise increase? And are we in a position to say, commit ourselves to $15 an hour? I don't think we're in a position to commit ourselves to $15 an hour without knowing some of the things I just mentioned. I do think we are in a position to commit ourselves to a first-phase increase. And I do think we can come up with some negotiated number there, and then come up some other reasonable number for a probable second phase. But we need to know what the state's going to do with regard to backfill before we commit ourselves permanently to that. That's the way I see things anyhow, so...
Jim, how do you feel about that three-year timeframe?
Yes?
Because I think that gives us, we, to me, it's important that we set the target, and just like we did with Mazahhar's proposal on the Affordable Housing Fund, you wanted to get that increase. We had that as a goal. We wanted to see what the backfill would do, and so before we went ahead with that, we wanted to make sure that was locked in. So to me, if we commit ourselves to 15 over three and four years, or maybe we decide four, like the Board of Supervisors, we then commit to a quarter of that amount, effective July 1st, 2019. That gives us staff more time to do the budget analysis. The proposal would come back to us then in January of this year. We'd be able to consider all the other competing... We'd be able to consider all the other competing proposals, and so this is our target. That's why I feel that we just need to set the target, and then it still gives us time to do our due diligence in terms of budget considerations, et cetera.
Okay. Since you asked me, I will answer. I think I'd be willing to identify $15 an hour by some date, I don't know, three or whatever, four, maybe four years in the future, as an ambition. And, you know, and then we, the council should revisit it as we go along. But I can accept it as an ambition, not as a permanent fixed target that we commit ourselves to. And we can't commit a future council to that. But we can have an ambition.
I guess, yeah. Jim, I guess you can commit, but if we find out that's interest on the council member, we can commit. I hope we will do that. First, I want to really tell you that, yes, I'm really worried about the backfill like everyone else. You know, and I'm worried about transportation, affordable housing, and I know we need money for all this. And, you know, I don't want to also compare, should we do public transportation on Sunday, or should we give our employees livable wage? No, we need to do all of them. I know this is need money, but guess what? If the legislation in Des Moines become very good people, and raise the minimum wage across the Iowa State to $15 an hour, at the same time, they did the, you know, they cut the backfill. What's Iowa City going to do? Are they going to comply? Or they're going to say, no, because they cut the, you know, the backfill, we cannot do this. Let us implement our value. We have a very, very good staff. We have a very good city manager. They know the budget very well than I do. I always go and take lesson about budget, so I can figure out things to tweak in and tweak out. And I figure out there is many, many ways. And I guess that's why we have a city manager like Jeff and the rest of the good staff, so they can figure out our values. As a council member, we have to implement our values, and after that, commit to it, and try to figure out a way to do these kind of things. That's why I think, from my, that's my own, you know, thinking, I hope I get support, we should move and have a commitment on raise the minimum, the livable wage to $15 an hour on the next three years, and after that, just try to find, to do like a committee, maybe, of three council members, to sit down and figure out the ways how we can implement this. Are we going to do this on the, like, also to commit the first raise, like, this is, say, July of 2019, to 11 something, and after that, how we can go roll the ball down the road to do this. I hope this is how, you know, the people will support this. Because I understand 100%, Pauline, everyone here values social justice. I don't have any doubt you guys can, if you can do it today, the whole 15, you will do it. But don't be cautious. We have a very good, like, staff here. They can figure out the, you know, these kind of things, and we can tweak things. We, as Rockne said, we just have, you know, the building permit, and we're going to have, like, more revenue coming up, you know, to the, we don't have to put all this on, like, 20 years, on, like, the tax. There is many, many, many other things we can do for this. Yes, we need to figure out things, and we need to do everything, from public transportation to livable wage, to all the value that we value.
What do the rest of the people think here about a starting point? Here, I'm going to propose as a starting point. But no, who, was it Rockne or John who originally provided a starting point?
John.
What did you suggest, John?
Well, because of all the complexities and unknowables at the moment, that, you know, we could look at a couple of options to understand the financial implications. One, setting a new minimum at, say, $11.50 for July of 2019. And then there was some variations, you know, Maz mentioned, I think, setting it, setting it $11.50 in July of 2019, and then a subsequent raise in January of, I don't know what you were thinking in the second.
I mean, like, yeah, mine is clearly, I said, like, $13 an hour, by $13.25, as Madison did, for the January of 2020, which is going to put us in, like, 11, 80, 75 by July 1st, and in January will be 13.25. And after that, the goal will be 15 in three years, and after that, we can see how we can do it for the next.
So there are a number of variations, I guess, with, you know, whether it's 3.25 in January of 2020, or 3.25 in July of 2020, it's, you know, it's just, with the idea, I think, we're talking increments in the timeframe.
So I want to see if we can get to a preliminary majority agreement on a starting point.
Yeah.
And then, you know, then we'll kind of focus on the next part. So July 2019, $11.50 an hour.
Yep.
$15.
I agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah. I was saying 11.75, but 11, if I find interest, I will go for it, because I want it to happen. Yeah.
Okay. So tentatively, we're there on that. July 2019.
11.75.
Then the next question has to do with, sort of, you suggested three years, Rockne?
That's correct.
Maz, you wanted to do this other thing where we had, within six months, have another increase.
Some kind of increase.
So... I would encourage us to look at this annually, based on what the state is doing with the backfill, and what our other budget concerns are going to be. And so I would recommend we go, if we're going to do this, that we do the $11.50 in July of 19. And then, I mean, we can obviously lay out tentative increases from there, but it's something I think we're going to have to look at every year with the budget in terms of that three, or I prefer to see us look at a four-year process, just in terms of the effect on the budget, and maybe we'll get there faster, you know, depending upon additional property tax revenue, and if we keep the backfill, et cetera. Jim, you make, I think, I think you made a number of very good points that, as a council and with responsibility to the taxpayers as a community, but still caring about that social justice, I think you made a lot of very good points. And one is, we cannot commit future councils. That budget is set year to year. And so I think to do that one step now for next year, I mean, you're talking for the people on the low end of the scale, basically a 20% increase in one fell swoop, and then gradually increasing from there as we look at that budget each year, with the idea of at least a three, maybe a four-year step process, depending on how the budgets go, to get to the 15.
And I would like to do it annually, too. My only concern with July 1st is I would just like to do an annual review with the target of the three years. I guess I would agree with you, Susan, that I think we should do the annual step up. But I do want us to aim for those step-ups.
Which we'll do during our budget review.
Yes.
I mean, as we do our budget annually.
No, let me get that, really, I don't get it, and I like to understand things. What do you mean by annually? Do you mean, like, oh, we're going to increase it to 15, but next year, if it's not good, we're not going to do the raise? Like, say, now is, July is $11.50, July of 2019, and when the budget come for 20, and we find the backfill cut, or something else happened, that means, oh, this year, since we are in really bad situation, we can just leave it this year, and we do it next year? Are you saying that? Or I want to see a commitment, really.
Yeah.
We can increase $11.50 by July 20, you know, 2019, and we will do it, like, maybe $12.50 on the next year, or maybe $12.75, as we're going to agree to, and this kind of thing. But I really want to understand what you mean by visit it every year?
What I'm saying is...
If we done it, why should we visit it?
Increases would be annually would be my preference, is what I'm saying.
Yes, it is annually, yeah.
Yeah, can, I'm unclear about whether you meant increases in, on July 1st every year?
Yes. That's what I'm saying. And I agree that our target should be 15 at the end of three years. That's what I would like to do. So as opposed to the increase of, at January, I think we should do the increase at July 1st every year, because that's the beginning of our...
I agree. If we're going to do other increases, I think they ought to be on July 1st.
Yes, but Susan, that's what you meant? Do you mean, like, increase it, or because visited, as if we going to review it again? That's the feeling, you know? Excuse me, my second...
My point is, Mazaher, we cannot legally sit here today and commit future councils to specific pay increases. We are going to have to, from a legal standpoint, every year, when we do the budget, do that process, and hopefully the budget will allow us, you know, to do those kinds of increases. But as we look at what our property tax revenues, what we want to do with transit, what we want to do with affordable housing, we will have, we just legally cannot sit here and commit these future raises beyond next year. It's illegal.
Yes, but you are saying two things. Legally, we cannot doing, or look at the budget. Look at the budget, if the budget allow us, we can do it, or legally...
We'll have to set our priorities every year as we do the budget.
This is the priorities. The priority is that we have to set today, I think, is to commit to the $15 an hour, is like 15, $11.50 on July 2019, and increase it every year annually, as, you know, everybody else, until we reach the goal of 15. And as a council came after two years, they don't like what we did, that's up to them. We're going to hold them accountable. But, you know, I just mean, we as a council right now, we need to set a goal clearly about what we're going to do to raise, I mean, the livable wage to $15 an hour, starting July. How much we're going to add annually? Visit, this is the budget, but it's still, that's part of the budget. But we're not going to think about, oh, maybe we don't have money, maybe we are not going to do it. I don't want to really see that personally.
Well, we're going to have to. But we can express an ambition to increase by a certain amount in July 2019.
Okay.
Susan's absolutely correct. We legally cannot commit, whatever that council is that's in charge at that moment in time, we cannot commit them to doing that. It's in the end, up to them, because they're the ones that will adopt the budget.
We are not talking about them. I understand what you think, but can we say, we as a current council, we agreed to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour in the next three years, starting July of 2019, $11.50, and we increase it every year? Is that illegal?
You're talking about the...
For expressing an ambition, it's not illegal for us to do that.
Is illegal?
But it's not commitment. I mean, it's, like Jim said, it's an ambition, but it's...
We, the one that who agreed at the time, is not illegal for us to say that publicly.
We did something very similar with the bike.
Okay, anything else coming up with another council, no problem. Let them, yeah. We are not going to ask them what to do. But, you know, we, yes, I would like to see a commitment for us. We don't want to talk about what we're going to have from them, but we don't know them.
I understand. Jeff?
What we can do is readjust the wage schedules for July 19 to $11.50, and figure out how we're going to compress wages. Generally, when we present our budget to you, with the exception of our capital projects, we just give you that one-year snapshot. It's so much data that we really don't go beyond two or three years. But as staff, we do look at some trends beyond two or three years in our operating budget. So what we can do when we revisit the budget with you in January is confirm that we will get to $11.50 per year direction, and then show you some forecast models to basically say, if we were to increase it $1.75 for the next two years, so that you can get to 15 in three years, this is the type of money that you're looking at. And that way, you see the data this year, and you can have that discussion going forward this year. Again, we typically don't show you those forecasted trends, but we can show that to you, and then you can, you can make that. So if you want, if you want, if I'm picking up the conversation, you can strive, or have ambition, however you want to phrase it, to get to 15 by three years. We can start to show you that forecasted data as soon as January.
Well, I think that sounds great to me.
All right. So we could indicate that it is our ambition, I think that's an acceptable way to put it, right? Our ambition to increase the minimum wage to $15 by, what would that be, 2020?
21.
2021, July 1st, 2021?
Can you, are really confused. I don't know what you mean by ambition. I want to understand that word, because I'm really, is this like a commitment, or this is maybe, what do you mean by ambition? Can you explain that to me?
For reasons I indicated, I personally will not commit us to paying $15 an hour by that, by July 1, 2021, without having better knowledge about what the state backfill payment will be, without having better sense of alternative costs that are in expenses that we will want to make, and how those play out in our budget. I need to know that kind of thing before I will make the kind of firm decision you want from me.
That's true. And for me, I don't like ambition, really.
[laughing]
Yeah. That's, for me, you said that, and I really don't agree with you. I'm glad that I asked about the word ambition, because I really don't know what that means.
But it would really take a subsequent, the way it is works is that you're right about in terms of future councils could change, but if we commit to this, it would take a future set of four that would have to change direction to staff. So they would have to make that political decision.
Exactly.
In the future. So I think we're getting what we want.
Yes.
Which is the commitment, and then understanding that if a future council wants to deviate and say, we want to depart, and we don't want to do the 15, they would make that political choice.
Mm-hmm. I agree 100% with Rockne.
So I've expressed a phraseology here, a way of phrasing this, that...
I think we agree.
We would have, indicate to the staff that we have the ambition of moving to $15 an hour, effective July 1st, 2021. And so you're going to give us some data when we get into our budget process later this year, that will help us see that, as, you know, see how it plays out financially. And then, there's, in the background, there's this caveat that Rockne just laid out.
Yep.
So how does that sound to the five of you?
Sounds like a plan to me.
And I guess, we're just going to wait for Jeff to come and give us, like, some ideas, if someone, like, budget work, or this is could be also...
No, no, no. I've just said, what we're saying is, we are telling the staff, we have an ambition of moving to $15 an hour, effective July 1st, 2021.
We are going to prepare our staff to get to $15 in three years, and along the way, we're going to show you the numbers. And if you get uncomfortable with it when looking at the numbers, you can give us direction to pull back. But we are going to move forward and get to the 15 by three years, based on what we're, based on what I'm hearing.
Yeah. That's what I...
I'd rather do four years, but, I mean, you're talking $11.50 in 2019, $13.25 in 2021, and $15, if you do it in equal splits, you're talking $1.75 an hour per year. I'd rather see it looked at over four years, in terms of the budget impact.
I think four years is too much, because Iowa policy project estimated that is 14.29, expecting 2018. We are way behind from the actual number. Three years, I guess, is, it's good.
How about the rest of you? Do you have a preference, about three years or four years?
I don't personally know that it makes that much difference. I mean, I feel we're into, you know, predicting futures, which we cannot accurately predict, and it's a very volatile time. I mean, I'm happy to stay with three, but I think we need to be fully aware of the unpredictability that we're dealing with, both within our own local economy and the national and world economy. But, yeah. So I think as long as we understand that, you know...
Yeah, we understand that. And we can make everything happen, yeah, we will.
Okay. So I think I see, what, five people, and maybe, I don't know, Susan, who would be okay with three years? You prefer four, I understand that.
Yep.
Okay. So I think we're clear about where, how we want to move ahead. It's 17 till, we don't really have time to move into clarification of agenda items and that kind of thing? Is there, well, we have two minutes, three minutes. Are there any individual items that you really strongly need clarified with regard to the, to the agenda?
Yes. Not that, no, no, no. I mean, like, the IBs, not now. No, I don't have anything.
Does, does anybody? I'm trying to look at my own notes to figure out if I do.
Yeah.
Oh, with regard to proclamations during the meeting, we have five proclamations. I'd like to divvy them up, so.
I'll do one.
So I'm just gonna pass them out at random, if that's all right with you, and I'll do the last one, which is play evolution. It's kinda fun. All right, so there's that, anything else? Yeah, we didn't have a chance to get into the climate action, so we'll do that during the formal meeting. Okay, I think we'll have to stop there. Okay with y'all?
Thanks.
We'll reconvene the work session after the formal meeting. So we really did not have an opportunity to go through questions about agenda items. I don't know that there's a need to do that, but if anybody has any questions that you need to ask, any follow-up questions, anything like that?
No, I just wanna thank staff, as usual, for the response to a lot of the correspondence. I think staff does a fantastic job of, I guess if I only had one comment, Jeff offloaded some of that to somebody else.
Hmm, yeah, well.
I know, so probably sometimes you feel like it's quicker to do it yourself and send it to somebody else, but still, just would encourage that.
Thank you.
Just forward to Ashley, forward to Simon.
Simon's like, no.
It's Simon's.
Ashley's done with the senior center, Ashley's done with the climate action committee.
All this time. You've got plenty of time.
The only comment, the only follow-up comment I would make, I was gonna make it when Mazza here was talking about the goats, was it goats?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That individual, one, the city may not wanna grant the exemption. The second comment I would make is, a very large coyote has returned to that area. So they might wanna be really careful with, if we were even to allow that. It was in my backyard today.
Okay.
I mean, we have a 55-pound dog that is getting older, and my husband went out to make sure to get the dog, because the coyote was following the dog to the house, so.
I saw a fox on Sevastia today, so.
Oh, we saw a fox out there today, too, but a large coyote is back, so.
Well, wolves are next.
Yes, in our neighborhood, yes.
Okay, I'm assuming there are no other questions about agenda items? Okay, let's move to the information packet discussion, September 6. Thanks for the email, Jeff, to Manville Heights neighbors, and that links to Rockney's suggestions with regard to the work session. We can come to that in a minute. So questions about the September 6 packet? Or comments, man? Okay, moving on, September 13?
Yes, I do have for September 13. I really like to talk about IB 9 through 13, but I'm gonna lay them down in like, three sections. First one, like item 9 to 13, is all of them related to serving, like, people of color. This is done out in IB 9, because it's saying, June of 2018, the police department began monthly supervisor review of DMC states. This is stand also in IB 11, regarding use of the equity review toolkit, and you grant management, police require racial minority in back statement. My question will be, since those have been stated, like, anyway, I would like to see a full description of this process and current implementation. For those, you know.
Of the supervisor reviews that are taking place?
Three, in general.
Maz, please talk into the microphone, something for recording purposes.
Okay, again, that's not the question I told you, okay? For, I guess I'm talking about, if you look at IB 9 to 13, you will find out that all of them related to serving people of color. And I'm gonna just like tell you why I said that, because in IB 9, in June 2018, says the police department began monthly supervision for DMC, which is like disproportionate minority contact. This means people of color. And again, in IB 11, regarding use of equity review toolkit, and you grant management, police require racial minority in back statement. You know, all this like dealing with, but I really would like to see a full description of the process of current implementation toward those things, like what you guys have done, or.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not tracking exactly. What were you looking at on IP 11?
Yes, if you read all of them from, not only 11, I mean, like, all of them from 9 to 13, they're talking about, like, you know, the people of color.
Okay, so just the toolkit process in general?
Yes.
And then the police strategic plan?
Implementation plan, yeah. Maybe not now, I don't mean that, you know, I just mean, like, if you can bring us like a short summary versions of what the implementations.
Yeah, I guess I'm not tracking you either, Maz, because I think all three of these reports are designed to be reports on actions that are being taken, or have been taken.
But it doesn't have really, it just say like, we did this, but it doesn't have like really the full description of the process. That, at least the way that I, when I read them, it doesn't tell me. And I would like to see that.
I guess I'm not tracking either, because I.
Have you read all of them?
Yeah.
I read them, and I just really don't think it cleared, to me.
I mean, if, to me, if I start with IP 9, to me, that's pretty direct about what they've been doing, what their goals are, the updates in terms of additional training, what the training is on, participation in various events. I mean, if you just take one at a time, like IP 9, what would you want different or more than what Chief Mathely has given us in IP 9?
I just wanna like really understand, you know, how the actual process is, when they do this kind of things, and, yeah.
Just sort of like more detail on each individual redlined event?
Yes.
That's asking for a lot, Maz.
Yeah, I agree.
So, but I hear what you're saying.
What do you mean by asking a lot? When you ask, you ask, you know, if they can do it, they can do it.
Well, but they're giving, I mean, I understand your, your, part of it is, you can't understand the detail of what's being described in the memos, because there's, I don't know, all sorts of background knowledge assumed by the people who wrote these reports. But if they go into more detail, we'll have regular reports that are much longer, and I don't know that we want that, and they're already, some of them are already fairly long.
Well, we could do a couple things. One, we could set up an individual meeting with you and Chief Mathely, and you and Stephanie, and they can go in more detail with you, and take an hour or two, and go through that, that might be helpful for you. And then if there's something that's concerning that you hear in those meetings, or that you think needs to be brought forward to the full council, you can certainly talk to the council about that. The other option would be to have them come before the entire council in a work session, and go through these points.
Yeah, I asked about that, but it doesn't happen, that's why I'm saying this, I asked last time, and this is will be in IB 10. And the question's that, I'm gonna, maybe you can respond to it. Anyway, I can, I can go with that, whatever you thinks, if the council are not interested on doing this, I will be more interested to sit down with him, and maybe Stephanie, as you recommend, and just review those.
I think that might be a good way, I guess I would just say, I don't think it's that we're not interested. I think maybe it's, with you being newer to council, you don't have quite the same background, just not having been on council as long.
Maybe.
So that may just be part of it, and so that might be a good way for you to get more of that background that.
No, and I like Jeff's idea, if you meet with chief, and there's parts that you don't think you should bring to the council as a whole, I think we'd all consider that.
Right.
Yeah, for sure.
If they can do better.
Yeah, I really agree with that, no problem, that's under my question.
You're definitely right that they all have to do with people of color, they all have to do with racial equity, and quite intentionally, I mean, each of these are initiatives that we started, and not, I mean, the prior council started the.
The DMC committee, the disproportionate committee.
Yeah, that part of it. And then Stephanie's regular reports, that's a consequence of stuff that happened under the prior council. And the equity review toolkit is something that really Kingsley pushed for very hard, and, you know, we agreed that needed to be done, and, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, that's will work it out for me. And IB 10, it seemed to address changes in the past practice that we're causing over patrolling in minority area, and resulting in this disproportionate traffic stop. I understand, by the way, I really gonna shout out the good work that our current chief doing to really reduce this. And I, I been here, like, when he was not here, and I been, I see the difference now. There is many, many, like, we have, we improve a lot, the progress is really, has been made, you know, and, but still, we have work to do. That's why, I guess I want the city manager, or if he was here, to comment on this, you know, because last time I asked the same question, and they said he will be here, and I guess he was here, if we done this during the work session, he would have answered the question. But if Jeff can answer, it will be good, otherwise, we can wait for him again.
Sure. Well, just really try to concisely walk you through the memo. So the, I'm starting on page 29 of the IP, which is IP 10. The first table is from Dr. Barnum's report. So Dr. Barnum organizes his data by square miles in the city, and we have 50-some square miles, 52 maybe square miles. And the zones that you see highlighted there are the ones that have the highest frequency of traffic stops. So Dr. Barnum's, one, focused on traffic stops, and then two, collects data on a much smaller level than we patrol. So those areas, 13, 21, 28, 29, and 30, then correspond to, I guess the data supporting those is the next table there. You saw that in Dr. Barnum's presentation. We patrol differently than that, we don't sign an officer to each square mile. We only have six to 10 to 12 officers out there at any given time, depending on the time of day. So they're assigned to one of four areas, and you see that in table three, there's green, blue, and a couple of pinkish colors there. We allocate those resources, how many officers, to each of those zones, differently based on time of day, and the calls for service, and experience that we have. So downtown is the smallest beat there, but that's where we put the most of our police presence down there. Our experience tells us that's where we need to be to be close to where the calls for service are, because there's high levels of accidents, there's high levels of OWIs and other incidents. So the police uses data to distribute their staffing like that. What I think you get into with the new information that you're seeing on tables four, five, six, and, four, five, and six, is, that's some of the data that we look at to help deploy those resources. And when we're talking about traffic stops, we're really talking about those times in which our officers are not running from call to call to call, because there's a lot of times during the week where our officers aren't really proactively patrolling, they're just going from call to call to call. But in those times that they're not, they're going to deploy in different areas, and sometimes based on their experience. So if they're doing more of a traffic, a traffic kind of beat, or detail, thank you, they're gonna, they're gonna naturally go where there's the most crashes. So if you look at table six, for example, you have the most crashes in those areas that Dr. Barnum highlighted, and that's what the chief was trying to convey there. You know, you have zone 13, which is the north side, well, all of them there, except really the Miller Orchard and the Friendship Zone, those are the top five, the top five areas for Dr. Barnum's report. So I think what the chief was trying to convey is, we're not doing the hotspot policing, and that was a conversation years ago, where we were flooding neighborhoods, and not just, not just on traffic detail, but flooding neighborhoods, because they might have had a couple of serious crimes, maybe a murder, or lots of vehicle burglaries, or something like that. We're not, we're not doing that anymore, but we still use data to deploy where we're going. And our experience tells us, particularly when we're looking at traffic stops and doing proactive traffic activity, that there's certain parts of town that we should be in to help prevent accidents from occurring.
You know, I understand, you know, your explanation, but it's really when I asked that a question to Dr. Barnas, I hope I'm wrong, is his name, right? He really said that, yeah, it felt, it seemed to him that the police is spending more time on southeast Iowa City, which is the, you know, the map was showing. And he said, yeah. And I said, maybe you cannot answer that question, this question will be for the department. I remember, I think Captain Jerry was here, or somebody, if I remember, and he was telling me that because there is more traffic over there, and I was like telling him really, how come the traffic's only on that side, you're telling me there is no more traffic in like Scott Boulevard, or, you know, Dutch, North Dutch, or something like that. And we end up, we supposed to meet, you know, wait for the police chief to come and explain this to us. And now, also, the data saying that the crash, because there is many crash over there, call for service, I guess, the question will be, if this is really because there is many crashes, why there is many crash over there, what's wrong over there in the streets that making the people like, having like many, many crashes there? I guess we need to solve the problem, if, because due to the crash, people are not on the city knowing that. They know who's live there. And if our officer doing everything as it should be, let us tell the public that. Let us solve the problem that making the police is the more minority on that area. I would love if the, if, you know, the police chief can explain this to us, like more, like focus on this.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, too, Jeff, Officer Schwent is leading the way on data-driven justice initiatives, and I think, as I understand what the department's effort is, is it's to use rational, strategic, empirical-based decisions rather than irrational ones, and unfortunately, the data seems to have sussed out the irrational things that they were focusing on, like, for example, consent searches, that very clearly demonstrated that requests for consent for search were not yielding more accurate law enforcement information, and so they were able to, I think, modify that. So I'm comfortable, especially with what Officer Schwent is doing, and I think he's sort of leading the way nationally on this, with the DOG grant, to sort of see how they're going. And Jim, you had mentioned Kingsley, shout out to Kings, I bet he's not watching, but I'll shout out anyway. He seemed to be very, he led the way on the DMC committee, and he seemed to think that we were moving in the right direction, but as always, and I'm sure Chief Mathely would admit, we can always certainly advance and accelerate and do better, and always strive to do better.
Yeah, and I wanna make that clear, you know, the data that Dr. Barnum presented, we're not, we're not satisfied with that data, we know we have a ways to go, but we don't feel it's because of the patrol allocation. We don't think that that's the driver of it. It's more just, you know, there's, there's all the things that's laid out in his memo, it's training the police force, it's making sure that we're aware of our implicit biases, it's using discretion on what needs a traffic stop, what needs a traffic violation, and adjusting some of those norms. I don't think it's patrol allocation, but going through an exercise like this and breaking down that data is certainly helpful.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, other items on that information packet?
The last item, last item is not like question, really, it's just a comment, on IB 13, diversity offered by nonprofit funded by the city, like, for reaching diverse population in, I know that is really challenging. I want us to continue to try to do better in including diverse population in the programs and activities of the culture, art, in entertainment, and educational organization funded by the city. But, you know, I know it's challenging, but we still would like to push on that, to reach out to, like, various community, so they can be a part of this. We have it there, and. We have it there and we approve it, we believe on it, but how we can just advertise it more so can people can know about it.
I couldn't agree more. And I can tell you, in every one of those organizations, at least the ones I have routine contact with, I emphasize this point all the time.
Great, great, yeah. Yes, every one of us can do that. It would be great. That's all I have.
Other items?
IP3 works this agenda in my IP7.
Yep.
So just wanted to give a little brief background in terms of the level of, of sort of review that I'm looking for here. As we may recall, relatively recently, I had requested authorization for a subsequent work session relating to what had happened at the Kinnick House. Not retrospective, but prospectively, to evaluate future tools that would not only be used in Manville Heights neighborhood, but potentially could affect the city as a whole in various residential neighborhoods. I'm not viewing the items that I list in IP7. I don't want final ordinance proposals. Really what I, all I was really looking for is essentially a staff memo to sort of outline for the upcoming work session, which I don't know if we've actually set. I'm assuming it would take place in like December or January, something along those lines. Essentially, just essentially like a regular, routine staff memo so that we can have a focused discussion. I mean, staff may say certain of these proposals just sort of categorically, we're not able to do, they're not feasible, we should look into it further. But that's really what I was looking for. And I think, and this originally was an email that I'd sent to Jeff, and I think I had more items. So I think Jeff wanted a little bit of narrowing down. So for these items, IP7, 1 through 3, they're all sort of things that I think we had discussed at our original work session on Kinnick to some degree of generality. And as I see the consensus that emerges, the least of Manville Heights neighborhood and probably other areas throughout the city don't necessarily want a heavy regulatory footprint, but they want to evaluate for these large, sort of atypical structures, some additional tool to give staff and the public an earlier opportunity to weigh in and to give staff the tools, the regulatory tools, to allow that denial. Because I think what we had happened before is no one saw the possibility of something like this being developed. And who would have foreseen a urban planning conference on whether a Kinnick House would be in a neighborhood? So that's really all I'm looking for, is essentially just a memo outlining sort of a general staff response to this. And then once we'd have the work session, it would be similar to what we had done when we had talked about, you know, unrelated occupancy, that if, that a son of them sort of made it way through, then we'd say, hey, could staff propose a more particular solution to this? Because I don't think there's going to be immediate structures of this magnitude or of this kind in the foreseeable future. But I don't see it as, I see it as a possibility that there could be others throughout the community as well. So that's really what I'm looking for. And so Jeff had talked about the need to get additional support. So I'm just wondering whether we would have support to at least get a staff memo in response to that.
I think clarity about expectations is good. I don't have any problem with what you've suggested be discussed. I think having a staff memo on those topics would be appropriate. I think we've already addressed a couple of them, and we would see that in a memo we get from the staff. But we'll get, we don't need to talk about it now, but, you know, we'll get to that point when we get to it.
I guess what more, what I was hoping for is, is that we get all the issues out on the table so we can fully address all the questions that you have whenever this work session takes place. That's why I wanted to send Rockney's comments to a conversation like this. Because if others have similar topics they want us to research or comment on, just assume, get them out now and try to have a fully vetted conversation in December or January.
The additional one that I would have, and this is one we've kind of talked about before but haven't gotten into in specifics, is the idea of somebody being able to buy, say, two adjacent lots and tear down the buildings and then put up some kind of a megastructure that is not...
That's really what they're...
Which kind of, which kind of gets to what you're saying here, that it's kind of out of scale with what's already there in the neighborhood.
Yes.
But depending upon the underlying zoning, it may, it may, it may not just be residential.
Didn't we do, didn't we address that in that set of amendments that we made back when we were doing the rental cap? I thought that topic was addressed. No?
I don't think so.
All right, okay. We all know.
There are other things in that rental cap that we did change that affected something like this event.
I think could be part of this discussion is just refreshing ourselves on what, what additional constraints are in place. But as I recall, I too felt there were some gaps in that in terms of building, potential building envelope that, not only for a kind of a Kinnick House, but, you know, with the lifting of the rental cap, you could have a very large house because of higher occupancy, which may also be out of scale with the neighborhood. So, you know, having some building envelope controls, building on what we already did through the rental cap to begin to look at that.
Okay, we can address that. Yeah, all right, okay. IP8 is the city council salary and benefits material. And there's a September 10 memo from Jeff. I don't know if we have the wherewithal to address this tonight, but I'll say a few things kind of right at the start. The table that Jeff provided us concerning the, what is it, 12 other cities in Iowa? I think it reveals pretty clearly that there's ample justification for increasing the salaries of Iowa City's city council members, especially if we want to make it more feasible for more people to consider serving, especially people who are not already, don't already have the financial wherewithal to kind of do this kind of thing. So I have some suggestions. I guess I can just, I'm on a roll here, I'll go with it. When I looked at the memo and the information contained in it, I thought, okay, well, the two strong mayor cities are outliers. They're just different, so let's ignore them. And I thought North Liberty's different. No insult intended here, but their salaries are really tiny, so, okay, throw it out. When I do that, I end up with the, the city council members for the remaining nine cities having an average salary of $12,300 roughly per year, with a range between $4,700 to $26,000. All right, so the key number there is 12,300. Mayors, on the other hand, had an average of about $22,400. And again, there was a substantial range of difference. And then I started thinking about our discussion earlier this evening concerning minimum wage for our hourly employees. And I started thinking, well, okay, what if we use that as a rubric for generating ideas about salaries for council members and the mayor? So if we assume that, I'm gonna make some assumptions, people can disagree with the assumptions if they want. If we assume that a council member works an average of 20 hours per week, and if we use the $11.50 per hour figure we came up with for the first year for the minimum wage increase, and council members would earn, I have, my math's a little off here, council members would earn, I don't know, $12,000 or something like that per year, maybe $1.5, I'm not sure. Because I did it for $12 an hour instead of $11.50. So that's what I'd like to suggest, that we use that as a marker. My original idea was to double the salaries of council members and the mayor. But in this case, I think, okay, let's tie it to that minimum wage increase.
12 sounds reasonable to me, but I think we should have like a 15-minute work session to further flesh it out. What do people think about that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
As opposed to spur of the moment?
Yeah, I think we're tired and I'm just giving you some...
But I think that's certainly food for thought, and I think we can project that then to the public then when we do that.
But I think in addition to the salary, we, I think we should talk about the insurance and the city kicking in for that. Because we were the only city that they don't kick in.
Yeah, so a key question there basically would be whether to assume a council member's halftime or some other figure. So my own suggestion is that we use that minimum wage as an indicator, 20 hours per week and halftime.
I'll just say that Sioux City kind of jumped out at me. I kind of liked what Sioux City, its format or salary structure. The other issue I was thinking about was city size. And Sioux City is roughly the same size as Iowa City. And then the question of the healthcare insurance, I think, is really important.
Yeah, sure it is. And, you know, if somebody signs up for healthcare, that, a lot of that would come out of the salary for that particular council member. Okay, so we need to have this on a future work session. Probably sooner the better. And if it's only 15 minutes, that'd be great. All right. Anything else on that information packet?
I was looking through IP11, and one of the things it mentions is bike racks for multifamily housing units. And that would be very useful for lower-income individuals, students, and so on. And I was wondering what type of steps would be kind of necessary to move forward with something like that.
Well, the, what we were looking at there is one of two options. Either through regulation, retro, the retro, making requirements for existing buildings to provide bike racks, which wouldn't be a very popular regulation to pass. You're essentially requiring them to come up to current code, but that would require them to go out, purchase, and install the bike racks. The other option would be for the city to incentivize it ourselves so that we would buy the racks or we would use older racks that we have, and we would target certain facilities or certain apartments and basically ask if they'd like to participate in a program where we gave them a bike rack and either helped them install it or allowed them to install it. So it's kind of on the back burner for staff right now, just, but it's, it's still on our radar.
Quite frankly, if we decide to move forward with it, I have no problem personally with putting it on their dime, given the tax breaks that they're getting from the state. I mean, they're going from being taxed at 100% of their value down to probably 55% of their value based on the rollback for residential. So, you know, given how much money they're going to be saving in property taxes, I personally don't have a problem with giving them 12 to 24 months to come into compliance with our current code on their own dime.
Okay. Anything else in that information packet?
I'll just mention, it was kind of, I found it interesting on IP15, the Restoring Civil Society with, you know, it was a focus on libraries. But I thought I had come, come up, or at least I hadn't run across the phrase "social infrastructure." And I mentioned it, you know, on our, one of our rezonings, and here it is being used again. Wait a minute, I thought I came up...
They quoted you, John.
Yeah, he quoted, he heard our meaning, I guess. But yeah, he defined it as social spaces and organizations that shape the way people interact. And it is a very important aspect of the physical landscape.
Let's move on to the last item, which is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. So Maz, could we start with you and move to the left?
I haven't done anything since last meeting, yeah. Every three months.
I'm gonna ask Ashley to step in here. So could you speak a little bit, Ashley, about the Iowa League of Cities, about the Metro Coalition, and about the meeting with the Ames mayor and council member?
Sure. So I had the opportunity last week to attend the Iowa League of Cities conference. So it's a collection of city administrators and elected officials. And during that meeting, the first day, we met with the Metro Coalition, so the group of 10 largest cities in Iowa. And there was a variety of discussions, first about legislative status, predictions for the upcoming elections, and what kind of impacts that could have on our cities. They followed that with some discussion of particular legislative issues. So some of it was pertaining to water quality issues, but also about the backfill and continued conversations about that. It was a nice opportunity to get a feel for and meet with other larger communities and the elected officials that are leading them. So as part of that, the next day, I met with and talked with the mayor from the city of Ames and a council member there, Councilor Martin. And they had particular interest in our approach to the occupancy code and regulation changes that we made earlier last year. And it seems like Ames took a very similar approach. A lot of what they've done with their code changes, which just recently took place, mirror what we have done here as an approach to occupancy issues. They do have a, like, an exception and waiver program for people who would take exception to their program. That's currently going on. They are interested in some of the other things that we are doing, particularly the University Program. They hadn't heard about it, and so they've asked for more information about turning our rental properties into single-family homes. So we've provided them information about that. And then they also took interest in our climate action plan. So they're interested there and already looking to us as an example for what they can do as well. So that's what I took from that event and happy to answer other questions.
Great. Thanks, Ashley. Okay, let's see. Susan?
Given that the Access Center has meetings three times a month, two executive committee meetings and one steering committee meeting, I usually have an update. We continue to move forward. I think, I don't have a whole lot more than what Matt Miller presented at our, at our work session tonight, other than we are going to have a staff meeting and myself, city manager's office, city attorney's office, and police department, myself, just to kind of talk through what we might want to see in terms of a 28E agreement between the city of Iowa City and the county in exchange for putting in our money towards the building, what kind of services we expect, kind of metrics that we might want to have tied into that, and if the thing didn't work, how we would get our money back. So we're just gonna start looking at some of the details that we would want to have in that 28E agreement, so. That's it.
John?
Nothing.
Rockney?
Iowa City of Literature has a lot of good stuff coming up. Most importantly, the Iowa City Book Festival, October 1st through October 7th. And if everyone couldn't tell already, I'm sort of a nerd. I love to read and I love books. And I used to always watch C-SPAN, and I always have these really good books and then these really good authors. And I often thought, gosh, why doesn't Iowa City have those sorts of events? You know, where you have these good readings and good discussions? Well, we do. And we used to have it during the summertime, but now we actually have it during a time when people can go, they're all not hot and sweaty. So go to the iowacityofliterature.org website. And the event itself is from October 1st through October 8th. There should be a lot of good authors that are there. There's one great book that they're talking about with, you know, What Happened to Wisconsin, which is a good book that I want to read, and a lot of good stuff. So check that out. Secondly, for you family members out there, if you have any kids that are interested in writing, another great program that John Kenyon has implemented is called One Book, Two Book. And it allows kids, I don't know what the actual age range is, I want to say it's 8 to 12 or something like that, but they can do submissions. And then if they get selected, they get to read their book publicly, or their little writing publicly. I think it's the spring, I'd be like February, March timeframe is what it usually is. But they're taking submissions now. So if you have aspiring, you know, writer out there in the family, do check out that website and submit that for One Book, Two Book. But other than that, that is it. First meeting, we had 20 members on our board, so we have plenty of board members.
Wow. I have a couple of things to mention. The Convention and Visitors Bureau Board Meeting is going to take place on the 20th. And Pauline and I are going to be meeting with Janet Godwin and Paul Russler, the new vice president of the school board, on October 3rd. And I'm still waiting to hear from Mayor John Lundell about meeting with Mayor Terry Donahue, we're kind of waiting on Terry. So that's it for me.
Could I mention one other thing? I forgot. I'm gonna be out of town, but the cyclocross is not this coming weekend, but next weekend, starting Thursday or Friday, I'm not sure. Do you know, Jeff?
Friday, I believe, 28 through the 30.
So Friday through Sunday, so...
So, you know, that's going to be back for year number four, three, I forget. Yeah, three, number three. So great international riders. It's a very different kind of event than what you typically think about in terms of bicycling. This is like obstacle course with your bicycle down at the Johnson County Fairgrounds. So would encourage people to come out, and they're probably also still looking for volunteers.
And also, I forget to say, kids vendor farmers market on Saturday. Please come out and encourage the kids to continue participating in those kind of events, yeah.
Good deal. Okay, I think we're done for the night. Thank you, everybody.